Good evening. We are moving into the City Council regular meeting of Wednesday, April 25th, 2018. It's past 6:30, so we appreciate your patience. One of our colleagues is stuck in traffic, but it looks like he's still stuck there. So, we're gonna get going, though. So, we're gonna call this meeting to order. As a reminder, if you would like to speak before the council tonight, please complete a blue speaker request form and give it to the clerk prior to the item. This time, we're gonna do, we are moving to roll call. Mr. Aguilar.
Councilmember Plot.
Here.
Councilmember Tassari.
Here.
Councilmember Rush will be marked absent. Mayor Protem Rigby.
Here.
Mayor Lormar.
Here. All right. Tonight's invocation will be presented by Father Patrick Kirsch of Blessed Father Romero Catholic Church. Sir, welcome.
And that is great. For God willing and majesty, we thank you for the gift of life and love which have been each and every one of us, which sustains us in every moment. We ask your blessing upon this meeting in the City Council of Eastville. We know that we live in a world that's filled with many challenges, and we have been assured by you that with you, all things are possible. Correct the hearts and minds of all those present this evening. We ask you to send your love upon the city, the city that we love. Clove it in your majesty and your glory. May we manifest your presence in all that we do. Bless this meeting, and bless those attendants, and may your will be done in all things. In creation, in birth, in worship, we love you, and we ask you to bless this meeting. We ask this in precious name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Father. Appreciate it. All right. Tonight, we're gonna move to our Pledge of Allegiance, and tonight's Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Mayor Protem Rigby. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. All right. Thank you, sir. Now, we are at the stage where we move around the agenda if there are any additions or revisions. The council may only add an item to the agenda after making a finding that there is a need to take immediate action on the item and that the item came to the attention of the agency subsequent to the posting of the agenda. An action adding an item to the agenda requires a majority vote of the council. Have there been any changes made to the agenda or suggestions to change?
Yes. Good evening, mayor and council members. You've all received just late this afternoon a letter from Verizon Wireless's attorney regarding item 9.1 on the agenda, and we request that you would pull that item for further consideration by legal staff and city staff.
Okay. We have a first.
Second.
We got a first and a second to pull from the agenda, item number 9.1?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Mr. Aguilar, roll call, please.
Councilmember Plot.
Yes.
Councilmember Tassari.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rigby.
Yes.
Mayor Lormar.
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
All right. Are there any other changes that the council would like to make at this time? To you, Seth. Anybody. Okay. We are now moving on to presentations and announcements. Item 4.1 is the introduction of Deputy James Huggins, the city's newest crime prevention officer.
Captain Hedge.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of City Council, staff, and members of the public. It's my pleasure to introduce you to your new crime prevention officer, Deputy James Huggins. His many responsibilities include coordinating the citizens' patrol, explorer program, neighborhood watch program, and a host of other duties. Deputy Huggins joined the Riverside County Sheriff's Department in 2007, after starting his career with the Los Angeles Police Department in 2002. After being hired, he was assigned to patrol operations at the Hoopa Valley Station until August of 2011, when he was assigned as a school resource officer for Corona and Norca Unified School District. Jim is a United States Marine Corps veteran, serving from 1982 to 1986. Jim is a family man first, and has been married to his wife Deanna for 30 years in June of 2018. Jim has two wonderful children, daughter Ashley, 27, and teaches biology at Los Osos High School in Rancho Cucamonga, and son JT, who's a civil engineer in Temecula. Jim loves mentoring the youth and has coached a variety of sports, including Pop Warner football, for 12 years in Rancho Cucamonga. He has currently enrolled at Coastal California University, on track to complete his bachelor's program in 2018. So, as you can see by his bio, that we are very selective on this position, and we feel that he's gonna be a wonderful component to the City of Eastville. So, please welcome your new crime prevention officer, Deputy James Huggins.
I'm really looking forward to this new position. I, basically, the whole time I've been in Hoopa Valley, I've worked for the City of Eastville Patrol first, then I was a school resource officer, and now crime prevention officer of Eastville. So, I feel I've seen it grow quite a bit, and I know the community very, very well through most of the kids and meeting parents with the kids at school. So, I'm really looking forward to this new challenge of keeping up the crime prevention and neighborhood watches.
Awesome. Thank you. Oh, thank you. Congratulations. You can't get away. We gotta do some pictures. We're gonna do some pictures.
All right.
you busy, deputy. All right. Okay. Moving on to item 4.2, and this is, well, all of these are special, but we, this is an introduction of the city's newest employees by our city manager, Ms. Nissen.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Lormar, councilmembers, members of the public. I am very pleased to share with you several new staff that have started in, with the City of Eastville in the last few weeks. First, I would like to introduce you to the Assistant City Manager, Brian Jones. Brian draws, yes, Brian draws from nearly 20 years in both the public and private sector, with more than a decade serving in the local public sector in leadership positions. He has led cutting-edge land use and transportation infrastructure projects throughout California and North America. He's a results-oriented certified planner and a professional engineer. He has led land use projects from large-scale residential developments, office campuses, industrial parks, transit-oriented development, downtown revitalization, and mixed-use projects. Brian has a master's in public administration from Norwich University focused on leadership and sustainable financial strategies, as well as a bachelor of science in civil engineering from UC Davis, and a minor in communications. He's passionate about identifying ways to help move and connect people, businesses, and communities so that they can all thrive. Brian's married to his wife Sheri of 10 years. They have two children and three black labs. So, we're very, very honored to have Brian joining the Eastville team, and we look forward to working together. We also have another city employee, and I'm actually gonna have everyone kinda stand up and eventually at the end to take a photo with everyone, but we have Chris Dehesa. And, come on up, come on. Chris has dedicated his life to helping others. He has the privilege of being a public servant while enforcing the law for the last 21 years in the cities of Los Angeles and Rialto. First, I wanna take a step back and let you know that Chris is our newest code enforcement officer.
Awesome.
In 2006, Chris co-founded a nonprofit organization, Making a Difference Association, that provides support to families caring for children that have experienced traumatic events. Chris is a family man and has been married for the last 25 years. He's here with his lovely wife.
He's gonna stand up.
His lovely wife Tammy. He's a loving father and a foster adoptive parent through the county of San Bernardino. Chris and his wife Tammy have received the National Adoption Excellence Award through the state of California and have had the honor to be keynote speakers for many foster care and adoptive events. So, I'd like to introduce you to Chris, and we are really excited. Don't, don't sit down yet. We're really excited to have him on board as we grow our code enforcement team, and he's gonna be a fantastic addition to the Eastville family. Perfect personality and fit for the job, so we're really excited to have you onboard. We also have Stephanie Vasquez. Stephanie, come on up. Stephanie joins the city clerk's office. She is our new deputy city clerk. Stephanie was born and raised in the city of Corona. She previously worked for the city of Corona for the last 10 years in multiple departments, including the city clerk's office, the city manager's office, redevelopment agency, administrative services, and most recently, the Department of Water and Power. Stephanie joins Eastville as a deputy city clerk, as I mentioned, and will bring to the city a wealth of knowledge in records management and customer service. With Eastville, Stephanie will be responsible for revamping the city's records management program, assist with public records requests, and assist the city clerk's office with ongoing projects to increase transparency in the community. Stephanie obtained her bachelor degree in business administration from California Baptist University, so we have another Lancer in the house, and she is a California notary republic, excuse me, notary public. She looks forward to working with the City of Eastville team and contributing to the organization, and we're really proud to have Stephanie onboard. As you can see, the Eastville family's growing, and again, she is a perfect fit for, for the job and, and for the Eastville family, and we're looking forward to getting our records management program all off the ground and, and together. So, if I could, Brian, if you'd stand, and I'd love to.
Yeah. We're gonna clap.
Now, I wanna put the council in the hot seat, but you guys took a photo with our deputies, so.
No, we're doing a photo.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Actually, I won't have you stand.
Yes.
I can try.
You're gonna have to.
Thank you.
I can try.
You're gonna have to.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
All right. We are not gonna be doing our student lia, oh, wait.
Mayor Lormar, if I, if I wanted to give you one more tidbit of information.
Yes.
With the addition of Chris, we have been moving towards a more proactive and education-oriented code enforcement approach. So, with the addition of Chris, and once the training is complete, we will be moving to code enforcement services seven days a week.
Very cool. Excellent. That's good news. Good to hear. All right. I'm glad you stopped me, 'cause I was about to skip him, but I would've remembered. Item 4.3, an update from Public Safety Commissioner provided by Chair DeCosta. Sir?
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor Lormar, Mayor Protem Rigby, councilmembers, city staff, residents of Eastville. Two items were presented to the Public Safety Commission meeting last night for approval. One was the aggressive panhandling ordinance, or item 9.3, and the city's emergency operations plan, item 7.1. Some of the questions that were presented by the commission and were asked were regarding the panhandling ordinance and if there was a way to map and track the data. I'll take your questions at this time.
Does anybody have any questions for Chairman DeCosta?
And like I said, those two items were presented and both were approved for submission to City Council.
Yes, I do. Oh, we have. Just, sir. Was there any significant discussion on the panhandling item that was brought forth?
Other than a way to map and track data and how, the way it was presented, and you'll see it tonight, it wasn't just a matter of berating the individuals that were found panhandling, but more so providing the necessary resources and giving them other helps aside from what the city is providing, what the county, the county as a whole, and to alleviate the city of that unnecessary burden.
Okay. Were there any members of the public that came to speak on that particular item?
We have four children in the audience, but we did not have any members of the public.
All right. Thank you. Excellent. Thank you, sir, for the update. Appreciate it. Appreciate your hard work.
Our meeting is scheduled for May 22nd at 6:00 p.m.
Excellent. Thank you for the hard work you guys did. All right. Moving on, item 5, student liaison report. We don't have that tonight. Oscar is out winning another award. I don't know. He keeps winning these things. So, moving on to our public comments, any member of the public may address the council on items within the council's subject matter jurisdiction. I tried to get through that, but which are not listed on the agenda during public comments. However, no action may be taken on matters that are not part of the posted agenda. We request comments made on the agenda be made at the time the item is considered, and that comments be limited to three minutes per person. Please address your comments to the council as a whole, and do not engage in dialogue with individual council members, city staff, or members of the audience. Mr. Aguilar, have we received any public comment cards?
Yes, we received two public comment cards, the first one being from Teresa Billingsley.
Excellent. Evening.
Good evening. I have been doing work with HOA for approximately 10 years with my HOA, and I've had the letters of alleged violations with no section cited, and sent a response asking for an explanation, and Teresa gave a letter saying second notice for violation. And this HOA doesn't particularly like to answer questions, only big thing, and they have a certain language and interpretation to the CCNR that doesn't exist, to selectively attempt to force non-essential rules to correct them. And this behavior is real cold. I decided after trying so many times to work it out, and then with several occasions, this last time, again, they dismissed my attempts, so I thought it would be that I ended by trying to contact the broker of the management company to oversee the HOA, and to my surprise, I found a listing, and you hear that database, and discovered today that California has a lower set of rules for management to oversee HOA. They need only take a few classes, whereas other management companies must have a license program. Having a group state background myself, this explains a lot of why there's so much dysfunction and community managers that create rules as they go along. It shouldn't have to come from legal battles and situations where we as homeowners are not only paying for attorneys to represent themselves, but to also pay for the attorneys to direct them in a way. It's really just a really sad situation. I kinda feel that this needs to change and that they need to be held accountable. I'd like to kinda suggest that a topic of the resolution committee be set up to help address this problem, and that any interested parties who are willing to assess this endeavor, to correct the problem, help out, because I'm sure that I'm not the only person dealing with this problem.
Okay. Before you go, there looks like we have a couple councilmembers that would like to ask a question or make a comment.
Have you, have you addressed the HOA board by chance? I know it's something that would normally, with issues that would be addressed to the HOA board, and maybe there's a, you know, board, board members there. Have you taken your issues to them as well?
I've gone to the hearing. I've sent letters to the community managers and people who have persons themselves who've been in charge. Usually, you don't hear a response. I've spoken to other residents and talked to them. They've also expressed that they've had issues over the years and different problems as well.
But no, but not specific board members of the HOA? Because I know they have, they have an election process as well, and they're elected by the community to oversee that, and the managers, the management company's just, simply is a vendor, but the boards actually helps oversee that, and I wanna know if that was possible.
I don't believe, I, this is, like I said, this has been going on for quite a while, and I did go to, I think, some of the, the members who were board members at the time, but they've changed quite, this has been, it's been 10 years, so they've changed quite a bit, and sometimes they, they are listed on there as being wanted, and then you get a letter about a month later saying that you're gone, they're all there, and then people fill the spots, all of the spots, they're all available now, so there hasn't been a lot of consistency with.
Okay. Mr. Rush, did you have? I was just gonna clarify. You mentioned violations. Those are not code enforcement violations, but from your HOA, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So, I, I think if you could chat with staff about some of this, but by some of the questions and comments, we, there is, this falls outside of the city's jurisdiction, the HOA. I think the avenues that Councilmember Plot was suggesting would be, and it sounds like you've been working them, but that might be your best recourse at this time, but please follow up with city staff, and we'll see if there are areas that, there's something that we can do, but they'll be better able to answer that once they get more information. Thank you. Maybe get on the HOA. All right.
See, they happen more often.
Thanks for coming out. Mr. Aguilar?
Yes, the second public comment card that we received was from Nicholas Tan, Ethan Lee, and Alex Nguyen.
I'll be honest with you, I agree with your question, but we feel that full accessibility to Eastville should be more accessible, and it is considering we have an urgent care. We have a dozen actual hospitals for emergencies, and we probably have seven minutes away, and that's without the time to handle this. We're wondering what your guys' opinions on implementing a hospital within Eastville and the viability of the area.
So, I, I would like to respond to that. Good question. That is something that is high on the city's radar. We'd absolutely love to have a hospital here. We've been working at that for a while now. We believe that there is absolute viability of having a hospital here. The issue with this is, it takes a long time to build a hospital and to line up the, the right fit for the community, and it's not just an excuse, but there, it, it's a reality in terms of the costs that are associated with that. They have to come from a hospital group, and also the regulatory loopholes that they have to jump through. So, even if we got a hospital group in here today that said we're gonna build minimum four years. So, we're working on it. We absolutely wanna see this come to fruition, and you raise a very valid point, and we're gonna get there. Just, it's gonna take a little bit of time.
Mayor, if I may.
Yeah.
If I may just add to that, very good response, Mayor. One of the things with the city is, is the city doesn't have control over exactly who comes to the city, so we can't find a hospital and force them to come to the city. We are, like the mayor said, our economic development team consisting, a lot of our city manager, is actively trying to recruit a hospital. We, we also see the need, but it's just something that we can't force them to come. We're trying to, like I said, we're trying to recruit some sort of hospital to come to the area, but it is something that is a council that we've, we've tried, and we continue to try, and we aren't stopping. So, we're, we're working on it. Thanks for coming out and sharing that, though.
Thank you. All right. Any other public comment cards?
That concludes public comment.
Excellent. Okay. This time, let me make sure. We are moving on to item number 7. That's consent calendar. That's items 7.1 through 7.
11.
11. 7 dot 11. All matters on the consent calendar are considered routine and are to be approved with one motion unless a council member, staff member, or a member of the public requests separate, a separate action item on a specific item. Does anybody have anything that they would like to see pulled? I do. Yes, Mr. Rush? Item 711, the SB 1 update for some questions, please. Excellent. We're gonna pull item 7.1. Is there any other?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull 7.10.
7.10. This is okay. It's in red. Of course, it needs to be pulled. All right. 7.10. All right. Any others?
Mr. Mayor, just for the sake of the record, we did have a member of the public requesting to pull 711 as well, too.
Oh, okay. Well, it works out, then. All right. So, we have 710, 711 being pulled. Do we have a motion?
I'll make motion to approve 7.1 through 7.9.
Second. Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Mr. Aguilar.
Councilmember Plot.
Yes.
Councilmember Rush.
Aye.
Councilmember Tassari.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Rigby.
Aye.
Mayor Lormar.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, we're gonna continue in order, then. We're gonna start with item 7.1. That's Emergency Operations Plan, or EOP update, and that's submitted by Ms. Rodriguez.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, and members of the City Council. The item that I requested to pull is not controversial, but I did wanna bring light to the council's attention and the public's attention that after four years, the city did update our emergency operations plan, which is basically a roadmap to how the city will function during the times of a natural or man-made disaster, earthquake, technological failure, fire, anything of that nature. What I did want to provide an update on was where the, the main changes were for emergency management in our EOP, to bring light to the fact that we did change some verbiage from the county OES system, which is the Office of Emergency Services, back to their new name, which is the Emergency Management Department. The ongoing changing with the State of California between Cal EMA, the California Emergency Management Agency, to California Office of Emergency Services. So, those changes were noted. We did also include somewhat of a robust public outreach component in the emergency oper-
All right, uh, so we have seven ten, seven eleven being pulled. Uh, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve seven point one through seven point nine.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, Mr. Aguilar.
Councilmember Plot?
Yes.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Rigby?
Aye.
Mayor Lormar?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, we're gonna continue in order then. We're gonna start with item seven point one. That's Emergency Operations Plan or E O P update and that's submitted by Ms. Rodriguez.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and members of the city council. Uh, the item that I requested to pull, uh, is not controversial, but I did want to bring light to the council's attention and the public's attention that after four years, the city did update our emergency operations plan, which is basically a roadmap to how the city will function during the times of a natural or man-made disaster. Earthquake, technological failure, uh, fire, anything of that nature. Uh, what I did want to provide an update on was where the, the main changes were for emergency management in our E O P. Um, to bring light to the fact that we did change some verbiage from the county O E S system, which is the Office of Emergency Services, back to their new name, which is the Emergency Management Department. Uh, the ongoing changing with the state of California between Cal E M A, the California Emergency Management Agency to California Office of Emergency Services. So those changes were noted. Uh, we did also include somewhat of a robust public outreach component in the emergency operations plan. Seems how our communications team has, has really upped the ante on getting information out. So we have an emergency management webpage that's very comprehensive, all social media, uh, weekly electronic newsletter, all pushes out emergency information now. So, uh, we wanted to make sure that that was reflected in our plan. The Riverside County Emergency Management Department now has a new, uh, alert and warning notification system that Eastville residents are privy to for free. They can register with Alert Rivco, which will work somewhat in a reverse nine one one capacity that they can, they will tell you when there's emergency notifications in your specific geographical area. So that's something that the county had been working on for several years to update. Uh, since the city doesn't have their own reverse nine one one, the county's is, uh, pretty robust and, and pretty impressive from what I understand. Hopefully won't have to use it, but if we do, it's there. I would encourage all residents to register their cell phones. Uh, I don't believe those numbers are pulled into that system automatically. One of the major updates too, uh, is kind of a link between the last three bullet points on the staff report, is we incorporated a whole community planning approach to include, uh, people with access and functional needs. So this are people with disabilities, uh, anybody with, and there's a whole list of folks, but to make sure that Eastville has recognized the legislature and some of the recent cases, um, requiring cities to make sure that they're accommodating appropriately to people that need, uh, special accommodations during the times of an emergency or disaster. So that was also incorporated. We did incorporate a position in our, uh, city's Emergency Operations Center organizational chart for someone specifically to, uh, help folks that are in the need of, um, durable medical equipment, wheelchair, uh, translators, glasses, anything that is above and beyond what normal services the city would provide. And also to include the lines of succession, uh, for both the city council. So if the mayor was absent, who would then be the sole decision maker? It would essentially go to the Mayor Pro Tem and then in seniority, um, after that. So that was delineated in the plan, as well as the lines of succession for city administration to now include the Assistant City Manager and the Pending Finance Director. So, uh, again, it's a consent item, but I wanted to bring that to the attention of the residents and also to the council.
Appreciate that and thank you for your hard work on making that come together. We got questions.
Just a quick question on that, does that, um, does this plan have anything about CERT or any, um, of our CERT certified, uh, residents in here or any information about them? Or is that something that should or shouldn't be incorporated into this or?
It is incorporated as a public outreach and training mechanism, understanding that there's an assumption that public safety may be overwhelmed in a time of a disaster. So CERT's built in there to say that we do have the availability of free CERT classes to the community, but as far as their active role and participation is, uh, somewhat of an anomaly as we're, as the city's gonna still look into the train and retain program that the mayor had requested at one of the, um, February meetings.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for the?
You had mentioned about the, uh, reverse nine one one directory and how to get your, uh, phone registered. People that are already receiving, um, emergency alerts or amber alerts, would they already be in that database or is that entirely different?
No, sir, that's a completely different system. This one is solely, uh, for some kind of an emergency or catastrophic event. The amber alert is, I believe, sent out through, is it NICSIL?
NICSIL.
NICSIL and Highway Patrol. And I don't believe NICSIL is integrated with the county's Alert Rivco system. So I think they're two separate systems with two different intents and purposes.
And what's the process for getting your number registered?
It's a, as simple as going on the website and I believe, uh, if it's not updated on the website, it is planning to be updated on the website, uh, soon. Where you, it's just a link, you enter your phone number, your information. I believe there's some options there if you need a T T Y capability or a different language. There's some options there for folks to be able to register those different functions. And also I think an email option if you prefer to get an email or as opposed to a phone call.
And there'd be a link on our web, the city website for that?
Correct, I was working with the communications team to add that link. Uh, I wasn't aware that the Riverside County had actually launched the new system. I know that they were still, um, finalizing it, but it's now available.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions on this? Well, there is a piece of legislation coming down, uh, the state legislature, that, uh, will require, uh, counties to have this reverse nine one one system if they don't already do it. And soon, they're gonna have your number anyway, even if you do not register, so. Uh, for real, that they will pull those numbers from different, um, this law suggests that those numbers get pulled from, uh, utility bills, et cetera, and including email addresses. So, if you're interested, check that out online. All right, uh, than, thank you for the update. Moving on to, oh, we got, we got, do we have a motion on this, guys?
So move item seven point ten.
We have a first, we have a second, uh, Mr. Aguilar?
Councilmember Plot?
Yes.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Rigby?
Aye.
Mayor Lormar?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Excellent, thank you. All right, we're moving on to item seven point eleven. And that is the Road Repair and Accountability Act of twenty seventeen, S B one, project list for financial year eighteen nineteen.
So just a question for staff, um, in regards to the, the possible repeal of the gas tax. If that were to occur, what would be the impact for us relative to this resolution?
Well, the, the.
Go ahead, sorry.
Good evening, uh, our mayor, council members, uh, Councilmember Rush, um, this project fortunately, um, is, um, mostly funded through gas tax and measure A, in this case, gas tax, because, uh, the total project that is listed on this staff report is about six to seven million dollars. It's a two-year worth of projects that we may also, uh, split that due to other reasons into two years. Um, the S B one for this eighteen nineteen is only one million and, uh, a little bit over one million dollars. So, uh, the impact is not much in this case. Um, we would like to have the one million dollars from S B one so we can use, so we can save the gas tax for something else, but, um, it's not going to be, um, a major impact.
Okay, can we hear? And I apologize, I forgot we had public comments, so.
Yeah, we, we do, who was the public comment, Steve?
The one public comment card we received was from Christopher Fulker.
Good evening, city council, city staff, members of the public. I want to express some concerns I have with item seven eleven and some of the pro, and some of the proposed projects in it. Specifically, the Complete Streets Project, better known as the Road Diet. For the benefit of the public, road diets refer to the reducing of lanes on the street. On the March fourteenth, uh, city council meeting, Craig Bradshaw gave his sixty-fifth Street Road Diet presentation. Shortly thereafter, council members and mayor overwhelmingly had concerns rather than peace of mind with this project. Many recommendations were made, such as not getting too aggressive with this project, to have public feedback and consensus, and to educate the public. One statement I can bear with is to have public feedback and consensus, which to my understanding hasn't been done. There are many, many concerns that Eastville residents have with transportation in Eastville. One example I can point to is the committee feedback assessment from February of this year. In the first question of this assessment, participants are told to rank eight areas based on what is most important to them. Those eight areas are strengthened partnership, arts and culture, enhanced city communication, building a civic center, strengthened relationships, entertainment, improved, improved traffic flow, and increased public safety. Of those eight, uh, of those eight? So of those eight, improved, uh, traffic flow came as the second most important area for Eastville residents. For the second question of this assessment, residents were able to give feedback on anything they wanted. A total of five hundred and forty-three responses were received. Out of those five hundred and forty-three responses, ninety-two of them were in regards to transportation. Out of those ninety-two responses, sixty-four residents expressed concerns with traffic. Twenty of them wanted to see roads widened, three wanted bikings, four wanted light synchronization, and one wanted to see the bicycle master plan implemented. Whatever the consensus may be among Eastville residents, I would recommend that the city do some P R for road diets, so the public can be aware of what is being proposed. I feel that this is, I feel that it's necessary to take this approach, given how controversial this project is and how little the public knows about it. Uh, speaking of S B one, uh, I was hearing today on the radio that, uh, S B one, the repeal, actually managed to get nine hundred thousand signatures with a validity rate of eighty percent. So that's seven hundred thousand signatures. So I think it will make it all remember about it, so I just wanted to give guys some comment, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Mayor, if you could.
Sir, I, I just, I wanted to say thank you. You're here every meeting, you're well-read, you understand the issues, and you stayed to the end.
Glutton for punishment.
Yeah, exactly. So, I just wanted to, to thank you for always participating. I know we don't always just, uh, agree on issues, but thank you very much.
Thank you for that.
Thanks for coming out. Um, good points, do, do we have any further comments, questions on this item?
No, I would move the item unless there's any other comments.
Second.
Okay, we have a first, we have a second, Mr. Aguilar?
Councilmember Plot?
Yes.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Rigby?
Aye.
Mayor Lormar?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
And I, I believe that this will come back i- if indeed we move, there is, um, if indeed S B one is not repealed, if indeed we get this money, uh, there will still, any of these projects will come back before the council. Uh, so it, it is a backup, it, it's an option, so. I appreciate you, you taking the time. All right, uh, that completes, uh, the consent calendar. Um, we do not have any public hearings tonight. Uh, we are now moving on to city council business. We are down to two of those now, nine point two and nine point three. We're gonna start with nine point two. And that is the cooperative, cooperative funding agreement for Eastville M D P Line H Extension Stage Two. Okay, Joe, could you please?
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor and city council members. Um, yeah, this, uh, cooperative agreement is the second one, um, that the city of Eastville will have with Flood Control District and County Riverside. Um, this is basically the money that we have, um, and allocated for, uh, city of Eastville. Um, year by year, at every, uh, tax, uh, time, there is, um, a property tax that's allocated for storm day improvements in the city of Eastville. Uh, County Riverside is divided into several geographic zone. We are in zone two, so the money collected in zone two can only be spent in zone two. So, um, during their, uh, meeting, um, early last year, staff attended the meeting, Flood Control Zone Meeting, and requested that we add, um, uh, extension of Line H, which is on Hamner Avenue, and, um, a lateral of Line H. Mr. Aguilar, can you put the, a map on the, please? The other maps, sir, yeah. So, um, so this is, um, if you can, uh, scroll down a little bit, uh, so this location is, um, uh, just right at, at the project there is centered and, uh, I apologize, I cannot, can you show the whole thing, Stephen, maybe? So, uh, this is on Hamner Avenue between Sliceman Road and Riverboat Drive. So, we have a line, the line, uh, the red line right there is an existing Line H, a stop right there. And, um, from time to time, uh, during rainy season, we have some issues at Riverboat and Sliceman. I'm sorry, River, yeah, Riverboat and Hamner. And also, um, the city owns, um, a piece of land, um, on the west side, which is known to be, uh, Al's Corner. Um, that location is always pounding water in the land. And even the fire station thirty, uh, twenty-seven has some issue with the water, uh, with the runoff. So, staff requested that, uh, red line that stops at Sliceman be extended all the way north to, um, Riverboat. And also, in addition to that, staff has requested a green line to be added to serve, um, the future Polopolis Development slash Civic Center, uh, project. And Flood Control, uh, Zone Two Flood Control Committee has approved this project and brought it to the Riverside County Board. And they have also approved this project and we will receive funding for this, uh, system in the amount of seven hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. Before you tonight is the agreement for your executions. And this, um, um, amount is going to be, um, used for staff time, for design and construction inspection, all the way until the construction is, is completed. So by the time we have this, um, this system, uh, at the Riverboat is going to be able to serve, um, Ri, uh, Fire Station Twenty-seven. We're gonna have a lateral there. Um, and we're also gonna have another lateral at the seven eleven and, um, at the Al's Corner, um, to take care of the flow, um, generated from that, on that side, as well as, uh, the flow coming from Polopolis on the, on the east side. So it is a good project for us and, um, I'm available to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
All right, do we have any questions? Comments? Okay, hearing none, I'm looking for a motion.
Let's move approval.
Second. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead. Do we have any public comments?
We have received none.
Okay, all right, I'm getting too excited. We're gonna, there's a short meeting this time, so, once again, second. First and a second, Mr. Aguilar?
Councilmember Plot?
Yes.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Rigby?
Aye.
Mayor Lormar?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, we're moving on to item nine point three and this is aggressive solicitation ordinance, Ms. Rodriguez.
Good evening again, council and residents. The item before you, uh, tonight is the aggressive solicitation ordinance. Um, on March twenty-seventh, we did a presentation to the Public Safety Commission, um, asking their direction on an aggressive solicitation ordinance. Uh, that would identify and delineate what that was, how to enforce it, what the parameters are. Um, just for a little bit of, of backstory, uh, in the recent years, I think folks have been noticing an increase in aggressive solicitation, also known as aggressive panhandling, um, within the city of Eastville, but also community-wide and, and county-wide. Uh, so part of the, the research that we did is, is hearing the, the voice of the concerns of the, of the people and also seeing it, uh, firsthand ourselves. Um, we decided to take that to, uh, Public Safety Commission with extensive research. We learned that, uh, the county has been doing a regional approach to, uh, address aggressive solicitation or aggressive panhandling. Uh, one of the primary benefits of an ordinance is allowing enforceability from law enforcement and a code enforcement standpoint. Some of the items that, uh, were discussed at the Public Safety Commission were not only identifying, uh, the problems with it, which are fear and intimidation. Folks are feeling fear, intimidation when they go shopping and they go to dining experiences. When they're just in the communities, they're feeling the, the pressure to give to panhandlers or solicitors. Security issues, if they're aggressively, uh, coming at folks, there's, there's a sense of fear there. And then the overall quality of life. Uh, it was also identified, I believe, um, that, you know, folks were coming into Eastville because Eastville people were considered generous and giving and caring to want to give to panhandlers or solicitors. There are some exemptions when we talk about aggressive solicitation or aggressive panhandling. And that has to do with the right to exercise free speech, um, the lawful vending of goods and services, and the lawful, uh, towing of a vehicle, things of that nature. I do want to also reiterate or iterate that panhandling or aggressive solicitation is gonna be a two-fold approach, both with the public property, which is what the ordinance is gonna identify tonight, and also with the private property owners, which will be, uh, more to come later. In late twenty seventeen, um, city staff had attended a group of Community Services District Parks Meeting, where this was brought up. Uh, folks were concerned about, uh, the influx of homelessness that could potentially be coming to the inland empire and specifically Eastville from the Orange County area. And though homelessness and panhandling or solicitation are not deemed one in the same, um, they, they can be, uh, connected in some regards. So hearing that, the city manager promptly met with staff, um, requested some research to be done on it. We found the regional approach, drafted a, a, a presentation for Public Safety Commission. And at last night's Public Safety Commission, we did present to them our draft of the panhandling. And, and actually, it's called the aggressive solicitation ordinance now. And that's actually a really good point to bring up. After running it through our, uh, legal department, uh, the terminology, um, aggressive panhandling that I believe Chair DeCosta referenced, uh, had been changed to aggressive solicitation to accurately portray the scope of the ordinance. So solicitation is a little bit more of an umbrella topic with panhandling being a subsidiary topic. Um, what we also did when we learned from the other cities in Riverside County was to incorporate a loitering and lingering component to this ordinance as well, uh, was, which will also give law enforcement and code enforcement a little bit more to go off of when they're trying to dissuade people from aggressively soliciting, panhandling, lingering, and loitering. In your packet, we do have the, uh, the, the presentation attached and the solicitation ordinance for your review. And we're available to answer any questions that you might have. I'm sure there's gonna be many. Um, but what we found during the draft of this ordinance is it's pretty standardized in comparison to what other cities are doing. Uh, and it's been working well for other cities as well. And that could be a reason why we're seeing more of an influx of panhandlers or solicitors here. And that could be a reason why we're seeing more of an influx of panhandlers or solicitors here, is they're getting dissuaded from other cities, and then now they're venturing on towards Eastvale. So, we want to kind of get ahead of that problem before it becomes an increasingly bigger problem. So, myself, city attorney, city manager, and the sheriff's department are all available to answer any questions that you might have, and tonight, we're just requesting that city council approve the first reading and potentially move forward with a second reading.
Do we have any public comments on this?
We have received none.
Does anybody want to speak on this? Okay. Going up here for discussion.
Sorry, just a suggestion that maybe we could, maybe we could make up some cards or something? Okay.
I'm glad you brought that up. I apologize. I do have, Stephen, if you can bring this up. I do have three quick slides. Thank you. I apologize for missing that. One of the requests that the Public Safety Commission asked at the March meeting was to potentially provide some collateral, some marketing material, knowing that there'd be a few different audiences. First audience would be for those that are asking for solicitations or panhandling, those, and then the resources that are available, then also educating the public on why panhandling or solicitation isn't encouraged, it's discouraged, and how you can help in a greater regard. So, as you can see on the screen there, there's, we talked about a resource booklet for the solicitors, door hangers or flyers for the Eastville residents, and then material for the website. Some of the ideas that we have, and I premise this by saying this is still very much in draft form. We have not finalized anything or received any approval from the city manager about it, but we wanted to show you, we have been moving forward and creating something. So, the first one at the very bottom right is a booklet. The City of Marina Valley has a really neat, small booklet that they provide, maps, resources for the entire county, not just their geographical area, for folks that may need help if they get bussed to a different location. It shows shelters. It shows a myriad of social services that are available to folks that may be in need of employment, showers, food, abuse centers, anything of that nature. The number two, which would be the top right, is somewhat of an accordion pop-up, and we had the idea of potentially making something small, kind of like a little bit larger than a business card size, in a trifold with similar information more specific to this region. So, that way, whether it's law enforcement, code enforcement, or property owners can hand that out to the solicitors and let them know, you know, we're not telling you no, we're not going to help you, but we're also not going to give you money, so let me give you some resources of where you can find work, food, shelter, showers, and things of that nature. On the left there, we do have a trifold brochure that we could use to hand out to residents, businesses, community members, law enforcement, council members at events, identifying what panhandling or solicitation is, and where some of those additional resources are. And then lastly, the door hang there on the screen is very much in line with some of the cities in Western Riverside County are using right now as door hangers to kind of get the word out and let them know, this is what it is, and this is why we don't allow it. It's not because we're not compassionate. It's not because we don't care, but there's a better way to give back to them and help change some lives and give the resources that are needed. Solicitation aggressively is not, again, essentially homelessness, but they are folks that are clearly in need, so they're asking for monetary gain, food, what have you. So, these were just some ideas that we had, and also identifying if it was approved, what those laws look like, what does the municipal code look like, what you can and can't do, and here's how to give back more in a caring fashion or compassionately. So, again, very much a draft form, but we took the ideas from, or the recommendation from Public Safety Commission, and then we had a couple of public comments that also mentioned they wanted to see some kind of an outreach campaign done to those folks, and also on our social media, our website, and things of that nature, to let people know this is how we can help as a community.
And have we resourced any of our religious institutions in the city and asked them if they have any services that they're willing to offer?
We have not yet. We do have a comprehensive list, and our WRCO fellow, Eva Terikova, has been doing the heavy lifting on gathering all the resources that are available and what's already out there. Many organizations, like the Sheriff's Department and the City of Riverside, who's the lead on the Western Alliance for this type of work, they have already resources, but we've got a compilation of lists of, you know, community-based organizations, faith-based organizations, when we get to that point. But again, we don't want to start advertising that yet, because I see that more as another phase of this project, if it's even going to be approved, passed, and incorporated in our municipal code. If so, then staff would be more than happy to move forward with presenting those ideas to the city manager, and then subsequently to council for additional resources.
Yeah, just your general idea looks even better than what I was going to suggest, so you guys are ahead of the curve as usual. It looks great.
Thank you.
Mr. Platt?
Thank you for the presentation. It was very thorough. I have one question. Can you, again, can you just explain aggressive panhandling? Just what constitutes what it doesn't constitute? I know you have in your slides, in the presentation, there's some pictures, people that approach vehicles, approach people. If you can just, what would list aggressive panhandling, some examples, and real-life examples of that?
And so, there's a very fine line between aggressive solicitation and just solicitation, just asking simply for money or for a handout, whether it's through verbiage, through a sign, through a gesture. That all constitutes still asking and soliciting. But if someone's holding a sign, and they're following you around, and they're causing someone else to feel fear or intimidation, or they're threatened in some way, that would be more considered aggressive. If somebody's, you know, accosting you verbally, cursing at you, saying rude things, demanding it, or even blocking, you know, your way out of a store or into a restaurant, requesting or demanding money, that would constitute the term aggressive. And I would probably defer to Captain Hedge or City Attorney Erica Vega if they wanted to elaborate on some of those parameters, or if they feel that was a sufficient definition and example.
Yeah, I believe that description was accurate. I think what aggressive panhandling is anything other than a simple asking for either money or food or some type of property. But even if they go to a vehicle window, and you say, they ask you for it, and you say no, and they say, they continue with the, you know, come on, give me more money. Come on, you have time, give me money before it turns green. That would be considered aggressive, because it's already been asked, it's already been answered, and then the person continues to be aggressive to gather whatever they want.
Thank you.
Just to piggyback on that, I would say I would consider it aggressive if somebody were just going in and out of the cars, asking whether they're being persistent with any particular individual. The fact that they're creating a safety hazard, I would consider that aggressive.
Correct, and in the ordinance, or the prospective ordinance, it does have delineated locations, and some of those locations trigger different mechanisms, such as freeway off-ramps. There's a safety issue, there's a traffic issue, there's a lot of issues versus the medians, versus, you know, in front of businesses or in front of city hall. So, they all trigger something different. Even as much as ATM machines or banks, that triggers a different sense of fear when people are feeling a little more vulnerable getting money out, and someone's right there asking. There's a certain amount of feet that's standardized that say, you know, you shouldn't be around, you know, close to somebody within 20 to 50 feet when they're pulling money out of an ATM, because it could be deemed aggressive solicitation.
Mr. Rush?
Thank you. I applaud this effort, and I agree with the effort. My concern is always on things like this, the implementation factor of it. Before I go there, well, I think, no, we've discussed it, nevermind. You know, the penalty is a misdemeanor. I'm assuming law enforcement and not any other staff, contractor, otherwise, is going to be responsible for implementing this, so we're not putting this on the back of code enforcement or anything of that nature, correct?
Correct. This would be a law enforcement initiative, but as I understand it, since it would be incorporated in the municipal code, I believe code enforcement would have some authority to at least verbally discourage the act. But as far as the actual enforcement, it would rely on the backs of the sheriff's department.
You said it's working well in other cities. Are those other cities in Riverside County?
Correct, yes, they are.
Okay. Do we know if the DA is actually prosecuting these misdemeanors? Because we all know that, I mean, a misdemeanor really doesn't mean much, unfortunately, these days, given the state laws. And I'm not, I don't not support this item. It's just, you know, there's a lot of subjectivity on the definitions, and when you're in the field, you know, and a lot of the responsibility is going to be placed on the deputies to make that immediate decision. Is it aggressive? Is it not aggressive, as, you know, they are with, in the normal course of their job? So, you know, what's, take me through the implementation part of it. I mean, if there's an arrest, is this a revolving door issue? Are these folks going to be back out on the street? Is this more, you know, we're not going to be putting people in jail necessarily, but, you know, at least this is another tool in our toolbox to try to move them along and provide them the resources if they choose, and that's another factor as well. A lot of these individuals, you know, that we've heard in the news lately with what's going on in Orange County, there are resources available. There's millions and millions of dollars of taxpayer money available that a lot of these individuals just don't choose to take part of. You know, my father-in-law is, I guess you would say, homeless by choice, and he bounces from one place to the other, and, you know, life of drugs and things of that nature. And I think it's just with, seeing it firsthand, a lot of these individuals just have the inability to stay grounded, and they need to be nomadic. And if it's a matter of, you know, pushing this out of our city, and once it leaves our city limits, it's not a problem anymore. I mean, that's not, that's kind of a jaded opinion of it, but... So, I'm just kind of curious on the backend portion, and what your opinion is, Captain?
Yeah, the enforcement portion is administrative. In other words, it would be an administrative citation based on a city ordinance, and typically, the sheriff's department or law enforcement does not file those type of violations with the district attorney's office. The city attorney might be able to answer a little bit better, but typically, it would be up to the city's city attorney to file those if they were misdemeanor charges.
Okay. Makes me feel a little better.
So, there are options in the code, just like any violation of the code. Misdemeanor enforcement is an option. Infraction enforcement is an option, as are administrative citations. So, the difficulty becomes in determining, in any particular circumstance, which method is the most appropriate for individuals that are not located on their own property, maybe have no identification. Unfortunately, issuing any sort of citation can be problematic unless they voluntarily follow up. We don't really have a means for following through if we can't find them. However, I think through aggressive enforcement of the ordinance, even if it doesn't result in actual convictions or collection of fines, sends a strong message to the individuals who are repeat offenders, if you will, that this is behavior that the city takes seriously and is not going to tolerate. And perhaps, you know, I hate to sound a little bit jaded, not every community has the same approach, and that perhaps there might be another community that their behavior is acceptable.
Yeah, Senator Ventura?
Okay. On the social aspect, a question for either Ms. Nissen or Ms. Rodriguez, you know, in the staff report, it indicates that our fiscal impact is not known, and I think that's, you know, obvious, but what concerns me slightly is, are we now getting involved in the social welfare part of it? You know, do we have the resources and the pipeline? Is this a DPS issue? Is this community, I think it's, the new name is CHAR, Community Health Action, whatever they form now, you know, do we have a direct line of communication with the county to where, you know, you or, you know, someone on staff can pick up the phone, you know, because, I mean, giving them a card is one thing, you know, that card may turn into a nice paper airplane, but, you know, being able to make that communication, you know, the county's stretched thin, you know, in all regards. I don't see us, you know, picking up the phone and a county health worker coming out as, you know, I mean, they're, in LA, they're actually putting county health workers on the trains now, because a lot of the folks from Santa Ana River are now living on the metro. They're, you know, defecating and sleeping there 24 hours a day. We obviously don't have those kind of resources. I would assume the county, either if they have those resources, Eastville's probably not the prime target area. Other areas that are a little bit more disenfranchised, so...
Absolutely. So, I have a few different aspects of that. There's a couple of things with the social issues is the perception and availability of resources. So, one of the things that we've done, knowing that this is right now just an aggressive solicitation ordinance prospectus, is this could launch into the homelessness issue or the pending homelessness issue that we can address in a proactive manner. What that would do for us is, we've already been onboarded to attend the county's continuum of care meetings, to talk about the resources. We've been invited to the Northwest Homelessness Alliance Team. We've also been in heavy discussions with key stakeholders here in Eastville, including the city manager, the police captain, J C S D, and other key city staff. We've been talking to the sheriff's department homelessness outreach team out of the Hoopa Valley Station on the pole of resources, and they're pretty universal, those resources. We may not have a homeless shelter or a specific shelter, a specific social resource available directly within the City of Eastville, but what we've tried to do on some of these items here is to find what are the resources in closer proximity. If this were to move forward, I would imagine that staff would work more diligently to establish those relationships, as you referenced. We don't want to get too much into the resources at this point in building the relationships and utilizing them, if we're not sure if we're going to be able to utilize them or how we're going to operationalize that. But we have lists upon lists of resources, I mean, as much as free showers that we could call, and I understand that folks may not use our handout to reach out for those resources. But like Erica said, if we do kind of an aggressive outreach, and we let people know these are the resources, and we equip the sheriff's department, code enforcement, and even building inspectors, if folks are out in the field, establishing those relationships with the homeless and the panhandlers and the solicitors, and letting them know, hey, do you really want help, or do you just really enjoy living a freer life? I don't know. It's not going to, there's not one solution for this. This is just simply a way to allow Eastville residents to be more comfortable in their community, so they're not walking, you know, down the street, and they're getting accosted by somebody asking them for money. So, we do have the resources, and if this were to go forward, I would imagine we would pull more resources and start making those relationships more concrete. Right now, we're just dabbling in the meetings to see what's available and what we can do.
Thank you. Are there further questions, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I think Councilmember Rush did have another question that he forgot to ask. He asked me if this applies to our children also. If it applies to our children, I like it, because then it'll stop them from asking.
I'll defer to the city attorney for that.
The context of that was, the captain said something that I always tell my children, "asked and answered." You asked, and it has been answered, so...
It doesn't work all the time, though. Well, maybe if we tell them, they'll be arrested if they keep asking. It might help, but...
Lieutenant Martin over.
Couple of questions that I had on, just seeing that it was, that it's been implemented in a couple of other cities. Is it in, currently in Norco and Hoopa?
Yes, it is.
And maybe Captain Hedge can answer this. How has that been in those cities with enforcement? And then also, maybe if there is something that's seen from those other two cities that you're also over, if there was anything that could be tweaked a little bit to make it better? Is there anything that you would suggest?
I think in both those communities, it gives us an extra tool to actually be able to contact these individuals who are suspected of aggressive panhandling or soliciting throughout the shopping centers. Unlike Eastvale, some of those other communities that we patrol have a significant issue, not only with solicitation but homelessness. So, I think that it's been to our benefit to be able to contact these individuals and provide the resources, which we do, as well as issue citations when needed. And again, in those communities, it's also administrative, so all the citations end up going to the city for processing, and if there's anything significant that comes out of it, as in filing with the courts or filing with, coordinating with the DA's office, it's usually through the city. But it does give us another tool to be able to contact these individuals, or when people call, to be able to have some type of enforcement, other than going to talk to the individuals. And the benefit, too, is that since my station handles police services for those two communities you mentioned, is that this will be in line with them. So, if for any reason a deputy does end up covering in any of the communities, it's not a learning... it's not a learning experience. They already are familiar with the ordinances.
Are there any adjustments from the other two cities that you see could improve their ordinance that they have?
Uh, I think, uh, probably the biggest issue that we would have would be follow-through, uh, after we issue, uh, it's, it's progressive. As, as an example, I, I don't know the, the, the numbers offhand. The first citation would be a hundred dollars, the second three hundred, the fourth four hundred, and then it, it escalate to the point to where it becomes a misdemeanor, um, is the follow-through, um, once we issue so many citations is to either file with the, the court or to process it appropriately. That's probably the biggest issue that we have after we issue so many citations to the same people. Um, but it's like, like I said, lots of times it gives us the opportunity to contact these individuals. And if there's somebody that we can provide the resources that wants resources, we can do that. But it also leads into, uh, enforcement of other criminal violations, uh, drugs, intoxication, other things that they're doing that are inappropriate in addition to that.
Okay. Thank you. One, one last question that I do have. This does not include, like, people just holding signs on a street corner or anything like that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Excellent. Um, before I might have skipped it, this time I think I did it, but I want to make sure. Did I ask if we've received any cards? We have not, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Um, so, if I could go back for a quick second, solicitation as opposed to panhandling, uh, did this was arrived at, that choice of words, how, again? You, you had stated it.
It, it was recommended by our city attorney that we, uh, change the terminology from panhandling to solicitation to accurately portray the scope. And I think she can probably elaborate on what that actually means.
Okay. Excellent. Right. Well, the, the reason for the question, and it's silly, but I, I watch too much TV and in the, uh, late night TV with the police shows and in that they bring in somebody, they've arrested them for solicitation and usually that's code for prostitution.
Something else, yes.
And so, I didn't want this to be passed and then us become, uh, people laughing at us for aggressive prostitution.
I, I had the same thought, um, so, but no, actually, um, solicitation, an aggressive solicitation is the terminology that's used by virtually every city that I've seen that's adopted an ordinance like this.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Oh, I'm sorry. When was the, uh, when, when was this implemented in Norco and Harupa Valley? Was it recent?
In Norco, I believe it was in mid or early 2017. And in Harupa Valley, I believe it was 2014? It was 2014 for Harupa Valley, 2017 for Norco. Um, and if it matters to you, Corona Riverside, Elsinore, Wildemar, Beaumont, Menifee, Temecula, Hemet, San Jacinto, all have ordinances.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had one question. Was there really thoughts that if, if this does get passed through council that maybe putting up signage around some of those problematic areas? Again, I don't know if that's a good idea or a bad idea, just for the thought of discussion. Um, was that kind of taken into consideration, like maybe we should put up some signs throughout Eastville, um, approach that or is that not so a good idea?
No, that, that was discussed, um, more and long the lines of, um, working collaboratively with the private properties. There are some private property owners that do already have some signage. It would just be more an incorporation of, of the city's municipal code as well. Uh, and I could also defer to the city manager if she has anything that she would like to add in terms of signage throughout the city.
Good evening. Uh, that's a good question, Councilman Plot. We, we have engaged some of the shopping centers and so they're kind of waiting for a reference for the municipal code to add. Um, you will see in the Ralph Shopping Center, they've already got some signage up. Um, Eastville Gateway has something that's just not quite hitting the mark, so we will be working with them to address the signage on the private property side, uh, for the various shopping centers throughout Eastville. Uh, however, the rest of Eastville parks, we would have to engage J C S D to make sure that they want, they are willing and able to amend their signage to reference this municipal code. Um, certainly putting up additional signage at areas where we're seeing this occur, um, that's certainly something we can do. We would have to probably do a budget amendment for the signage and marketing materials. And we can bring that back to you for, uh, consideration, uh, once we have something designed.
Thank you.
At council's discretion if that's what you choose to do.
Aside from the panhandling, the loiter, loitering, uh, portion, um, it says in there two signals if you're standing in the same place at an intersection. Has that been tested that you know of?
Uh, not that I know of. Um, a lot of the cities approach this in a, in a manner that, uh, provides a bit of a fuzzy definition of what constitutes lingering and loitering in a median. Um, I prefer something that is concrete and approvable violation, which is why I, um, actually edited that section myself. Uh, so, I, I'm, maybe you're setting the standard a bit.
No, I, I concur. And I actually like it.
Any other comments or questions? All right, I'm looking for a motion.
A move approval.
Second, we got first, we have a second, Mr. Aguilera.
Councilmember Plot?
Yes.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Rigby?
Aye.
Mayor Lormore?
Aye.
Motion passed, five zero.
And, and just for clarification, so the next steps is a second reading in thirty day or second reading, next hearing, next plan, uh, next city council, and then it'll be effective in thirty days?
Yes, correct. Thirty days after second reading.
Okay. And we're anticipating that in two weeks?
Yes.
Our city clerk is shaking his head, yes. Okay. Thank you. All right. Uh, that concludes, um, our business items. We are now moving on to the city manager report and city staff reports. Ms. Nissen.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, members of the public. Um, I'm going to keep it brief. I don't have a lot to share with you. However, um, most importantly, I would like to share with you that today is Aleah Rodriguez's, uh, last day with the city of Eastville. And we're really excited for her. We're very sad to see her go. Um, she is, has taken a position with the city of Riverside as the administrative services manage, director, manager, manager for Riverside Fire.
Wow, that's awesome. Congrats.
Yes. Congratulations is in order. Uh, we're really happy for her and, and proud of her, but at the same time, we're very sad to see her go. And she's been a wonderful asset to the Eastville team. Maybe she'll come back this way one of these days with a rebribe her. But, um, you know, please, uh, give, take a moment to, um, thank her for her service and, uh, wish her well.
Absolutely. Congratulations. Thank you. Before you start, Joe, yes, we, we are absolutely going to miss you, Aleah. Thank you for all your hard work and, uh, but moving up that career ladder. Love it. Well deserved. Thank you. Sir?
Mayor, good evening again, and city councilmembers. Um, tonight, my report is actually sharing a story. If you remember, a couple of meetings ago, I'm here to report to you and provide information of, uh, the process of the Public Works, uh, traffic requests from, um, development, from community, uh, from the city council and, and other, um, people. And tonight, I just want to share how, uh, the community works and it's actually, I'm going to share a success story. Um, Mr. Aguilar, can you show me the, show the map, please? Okay. Well, this is a map of Ronald Reagan's school. Um, a few months ago, I believe Councilman Plot, if I'm not mistaken, uh, after he had a neighborhood watch meeting in this area, sent me an email saying, "Hey, um, can you call this lady, um, who lives in this area, says taking the kids every day to school and the crossing here at this location is, is horrible." Um, at, at, uh, from the community here, they cross, uh, um, Cherry Creek. And so I did call, um, this lady and I said, "What's the situation?" She explained to me, she gave me a videotape of what she took, and it was a busy intersection. So, um, as a result, we sent our technician, traffic technician to the field. And what he did is he, um, observed and he did the traffic counts and he came back with, um, with the report to us and saying, "Joe, I think this is, um, warranted for having a crosswalk." Um, at that location, uh, at that time, there is no, um, handicap ramp or I missed, I should say, ADRAM on both sides. Uh, we have, um, uh, no crosswalks and no handicap ramp on this, uh, the intersection is actually, if I can, okay, this location here, there is no handicap ramp. So, um, when we received the report, we reported that, um, to a city manager and I got the support, um, to do the, um, cost estimating, um, proposals. So, we solicited a couple of proposals for contractors. One is to do the handicap ramp at this location and the other one is to do the crosswalk. And I'm happy to report to you tonight that, um, the crosswalk and handicap ramp has been installed as of today. Ms. Aguilar, can you go to the next picture? And we have done this and maybe, um, on the far side, you can see the handicap ramp we just installed. And this crosswalk has been installed at locations. This is just, um, I believe, a success story, how the community works. And sometimes I'm here to report to you, there's a request made and, um, we couldn't make it because it didn't meet warrant. It's almost like a sad story every time, but this is actually not a sad story, this is a good story that, uh, how the community is so involved and they reported to us and then, and we acted on it. Thank you so much.
That's great. Mr. Plot?
Yeah, Joe, I just want to say thank you for all the hard, sometimes the unsung heroes, the people that actually do all the work, like the staff and, and that. So, thank you again for just being so diligent in, in doing that. So, much appreciated.
Great, Joe. Thank you. Any other report? Oh, yes, there is, of course.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, um, and City Council. I am really excited to share that success story, so hopefully tomorrow we will be able to do that on our outreach platforms. I do have a few updates to share with you, events that are coming up. This weekend, it will be the annual Eastville Campout at Roddick or St. Park, so, um, hopefully that, it's supposed to be a really fun time, um, bring your friends and family, and there's going to be music. But it's going to be this Saturday through Sunday, um, April twenty, uh, twenty ninth. The Eastville Chamber of Commerce will be having International Day of Prayer and Breakfast, um, which if you are going to be joining, um, and so we're looking forward to that. I believe they are going to have ten seats, so if you know anyone who had asked for seats, there's ten seats left. Um, the, um, pre-residential cleanup, the people are shooting at that opening on May twenty sixth, and we're very much looking forward to that. In fact, we have shared smaller flyers for that event with local authorities, so they can share that as a part of their, um, outreach when they're out of the building, remind residents that we have that available to them. And then we will be hosting a business outreach workshop, a partnership with Eastville Chamber, the Harupa Valley Chamber, and the City of Harupa Valley regarding the primary interchange project. So, um, that will be on June twenty, I'm sorry, uh, that will be on June fifth at six P. M. at New Day Church. And we're looking forward to state of the city on July twenty fourth, July twenty fourth, um, at six P. M. at Eleanor Roosevelt Hospital. And I think that's it for me. Um, one more thing, actually, we are working on drafting a comprehensive community assessment survey. So, as mentioned before, we did that brief simple survey in February, so this will be a much more comprehensive survey, where we will do with, uh, city, city staff to see, um, which questions we're going to be asking. And we're looking forward to the results of that. So, I'd like to answer the questions.
Any questions? I did have one. You had mentioned June fifth at New Day. Um, what, what was being held there?
A business workshop for the learn and interchange project. Dennis Green presented a couple of examples that council will be, um, presenting on the project and making sure that the businesses are well informed of the project and preparation to the impacts that it may have on, on the businesses.
Okay. That, that's, I believe that's election day. Um, I don't know if that's a polling place and if it is, if they're separate, so just a heads up.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Uh, for the community cleanup day, we are looking for volunteers. So, if you know anyone that would like to assist with that, um, please have them contact Olivia. Uh, we'll be looking for volunteers and shifts and we are looking for some people with some muscles. If you've worked one of those events before, it is very physical.
What was the day and time of that again?
That would be on May twenty sixth. It's a Saturday and, um, that would be from eight A. M. to twelve in the afternoon. And thank you in advance for your participation or your consideration of participation.
I was not.
I participated in it yet.
I was asking for my colleagues.
Correct. They, I hear it's a really great event and usually have a great turnout, so, um, looking forward to that.
And, and where's the stage, staging area? Where?
That would be, uh, obviously, um, where the community is.
Across the street?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
All right. Any other updates, reports? Okay. This time, th- thank you for all those, uh, moving on to item eleven, city council communications committee reports. Start down here.
Uh, we had our, um, public safety policy committee, our public, for the league of California cities. Uh, there were a couple of items that we took action on. Uh, one of them was regarding, um, people who are, like, and I apologize, I don't remember the bill number and I didn't bring my notes with me. Uh, but there's a, currently a, a piece of legislation that we, uh, supported, uh, which would give the state the ability to deprive somebody of their Second Amendment rights if they are committed on a fifty-one fifty hold twice. And I think it's within a five-year period. However, the person who's, uh, been committed and has that, uh, action taken against them can appeal. And on appeal, it's the requirement, or the burden of proof is on the state to prove that you should not be able to, uh, purchase or own firearms anymore. Uh, there was a, uh, amendment proposed in the committee to, uh, change that and put the burden on the individual, which was promptly shot down by the rest of the committee. I don't think, uh, it shouldn't, we didn't think it should ever be the burden, uh, of an individual to, uh, prove why they should be able to exercise their own constitutionally guaranteed rights, so. Uh, the other item, we, so as I said, we voted, uh, to support that. The second, uh, item was the, uh, proposition that's coming down that's going to try and roll back some of the issues that we have with Prop fifty-seven forty-seven and A B one oh nine. Uh, that, that was, uh, basically the precursor to this or the, the catalyst that got this rolling was the, there was a bill that went through the state assembly and the, uh, state senate. Uh, it passed unanimously. It was a, um, public safety bill, which I don't know if there's ever been a time that I can recall that the state legislature has voted unanimously on any public safety bill, but they did on this one and, uh, the governor waited until the day that it was going to become law and decided to veto it. So, now the proposition is coming in and it's basically, we voted to, uh, support that. Uh, obviously, the governor's opposed and, uh, it would, uh, change the classification for some of the crimes that have been reduced to misdemeanors and, uh, make them felonies again. Um, and it's pretty detailed. I would encourage, uh, everybody to go take a look at it. Um, actually. I don't have the notes on that one either. I apologize. But, uh, take a look at it. Uh, we voted to support it. It'll be on this, uh, the next ballot. And the last thing I have is, uh, Kiwanis Club on Cinco de Mayo, nine thirty in the morning in front of Roosevelt High School for Street Cleanup. That's all I have.
Awesome. No comments? Mr. Rush? Um, we have our rescheduled meeting with, um, Assemblymember Cervantes tomorrow. Do we have a, I know, council, uh-
Do we have a, I know, or Mayor Pro Tim Rigby had some bills, I had some. Do we have like a cheat sheet of what we wanted to go over? No? Can we put something together like tomorrow? I had, throw them up here. Just so they don't get caught off guard, we can, I know her time is, she wants to be efficient. AB twenty-seven fifty-six and AB twenty-nine twenty-six, and I don't know what yours were, Mr. Rigby.
Can you repeat the last one again?
AB twenty-nine, so it's AB twenty-two seven five six and two nine two six.
Two six.
Maybe we can just send that to her ahead of time. I did talk to Justin DeWelle on those two in preparation for our last meeting, so. Didn't have RCTC, or WR COG was early on. I know we have SCAG next week. I think that was it. No, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rigby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. I also attended the league policy committees for the community services policy committee. The hot topic there was the homelessness, and talked a lot about the task force that's, task force report by the Institute for Local Governments. There was a presentation from Melissa Kuhn regarding that, and just kind of went hand in hand with aggressive solicitation presentation today. Just talked about a lot of resources. And I know that from our JCSD Parks Commission, it's been something that we are working as a joint group with the parks and the city to be able to make sure that we are covering what we can do on the forefront with homelessness. So that was the main thing that we discussed and went over there. Recap, just real quick on JCSD Parks Commission meeting that we recently had. Excuse me, the hot topic there was law enforcement for the Parks Deputy. From my opinion, it seemed to be a consensus between the four commissioners that we want to continue to see that deputy. The JCSD is going to bring back some data for us, and this will be reheard by the Parks Commission before going to the board. It'll ultimately be a board decision, since it is JCSD funds. I talked to city staff about this, but just wanted to bring it up and see if we can maybe bring it for agenda item in a discussion regarding trash dumping in the city, just to see if we can have maybe just a report on that and what's being done and what we can continue to do in the future. Some of the things that I've thought about is, is maybe if we can do some sort of fencing or barricading, allowing emergency vehicle and pedestrian traffic still in these areas, but I think a lot of it is, you're seeing trucks that are just offloading trash in these areas, as well as I think it would be good for us to discuss the possibility of doing signage around some of these reoccurring areas. So if we can bring that back to the council and for a discussion, that would be great. The last thing is, is just a reminder that if we can have our sign ordinance, I know the staff's working on that, but if we can have that brought back to the council too, that we can discuss our sign ordinance. That's all I have.
Brave. Excellent. Mr. Plot?
Actually, I just had a real quick follow-up. Have we reached out to, and had any success? Reached out to Boy Scout troop twenty-seventeen on the international recognition of most popcorn sales? It was somebody had asked from last, last meeting.
No, I'm sorry, I have not done that.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
How come I see the Girl Scouts everywhere selling cookies? I didn't see the Boy Scouts. Am I not looking?
Boy Scouts sell popcorn.
Huh?
They sell popcorn.
Different timing, too. I know, but I know they sell the popcorn, and I think I would buy the popcorn if I saw it.
popcorn's good.
Anyway.
They were definitely at Albertson's.
They're not like the Ralphs.
Albertson's?
Yeah, they were at Albertson's.
It's a little overpriced. It is a little...
It was a lot of, a lot of popcorn for twenty dollars.
Okay. Now that I've said this, they're all gonna come.
I didn't realize I brought up such a controversial, I brought up such a controversial topic. I apologize.
All right, a couple of quick updates, as quick as they can be. Touching off of the Public Safety Committee, those recommendations were passed up to the state board. Attended the state board meeting on behalf of the Riverside Division for the League of Cities. So up there, and this meeting took place in Sacramento, it turns out that the Public Safety Commission's recommendation to make adjustments to Prop forty-seven and fifty-seven, you correctly stated, Joe, that the governor did not like that, to the point that he came to speak to the board to tell us why we should not back this initiative that's in the process. And he talked about other things, but that was the main reason. And so it was interesting. I think that, and as a result, he got the board to agree to not make, staff to agree to not make a decision on this until June, our June meeting. But I spoke with some people, there is now a whole lot of concern of the postponement. I believe that the league will weigh in against this because it isn't the best, or weigh in to vote in favor of supporting the initiative that makes adjustments to Prop forty-seven fifty-seven and AB one oh nine, because our system, it's broken. But hearing the governor, it was very interesting. He was talking about public safety, specifically prisons, and all the different agencies that make up our public safety system, law enforcement. He seemed to view it, unlike I believe we view it here, as a necessary, just cost something that is just taking away money from what he'd really like to do. And so it was interesting to see that. But long and short of it is that we're gonna, the state board will take it up in June, and my reading of the room is that it will pass to support that measure. So that was interesting at this state board meeting. It was a lot of saying what, reaffirming all of the things that the board had already agreed to do in terms of backing propositions or fighting against initiatives. And so the league will be weighing in on a number of these things, many, which I actually don't agree with the league's positions on and argued against. But it is a, I am not in the majority on much of those decisions, but try to fight the good fight in my opinion there. So also, since then, we had a, the league had its division meeting, but it was for the executive committee, and we talked, I just gave a similar update to the update that I gave here. And this morning, had the pleasure of participating in a mayor's roundtable, and Ms. Nissen was there as well, and this was hosted by Supervisor Chuck Washington to talk about how to improve the county's rankings, and in turn collectively, all the cities in the county, quality of life in different areas that are measurable, whether that be in health, traffic. So many things were discussed, ideas were shared. This took place in Beaumont this morning, so.
Quality of life issues.
So that, I'm gonna end it there. Concludes my comments. Appreciate everybody taking the time today. We do have a closed session, and that's items twelve point one and twelve point two. So Ms. Vega, will you introduce these two items?
Yes, the two items are a closed session conference with legal counsel for anticipated litigation, one case, and also a conference with labor negotiator, with myself being your representative, discussing the city manager.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you all for taking the time tonight. Appreciate you coming out.